And all visitors, we welcome you tonight. For those of you who are here maybe for the first time, we are the Planning and Voting Commission of Bullock County. We are a recommending board for legislative issues, and there are several tonight that are legislative issues. And they will give a final determination at the county commissioners' meeting on October 7th, 5:30 in this room. And I'll let you know again, every time an agenda item comes up, that is a legislative decision. And if y'all will look to your right, you will see two clocks on the wall. If we have anyone signed up to speak, if you've already signed up, the sign up sheets are up here. You will have a total of 10 minutes per agenda side. So if there are five signed up for or five signed up against, you'll have a total of 10 minutes. So remember that. While we want to hear from everybody here, repetition is something we need to think about because there are only 10 minutes. All right. It is now time to call this meeting to order. I'd like to welcome again all meeting and any visitors who are here. And I would also like to remind everyone with a cellphone to please turn it to silent for the duration of the meeting for the benefit of all here. And I'm going to ask Mr. Lovett, our new commissioner, to give us an invitation and lead the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Gracious Father, we thank you, God, for this opportunity to come to take care of business in our county. Father God, we ask you to just be with us all, take control of this meeting. And God, we ask you to bless us that the decisions we make will always glorify you. We thank you for blessing us with a beautiful place to live. And we thank you, God, for the opportunity to come together to make decisions for the betterment of all citizens. This we ask in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. First item on the agenda tonight will be the amendment or the approval of the minutes from our last meeting. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
I got a motion to approve for Mr. Bass, the second from Mr. Lane. All those in favor? The minutes are approved as written. First item on the agenda tonight will be Mr. Gregory Trappnell Sykes, who has submitted a request for a conditional use to locate a 195-foot tower to be used for communications equipment. The property is located on Pless Clifton Road. Mrs. Ivy Cadel will be here acting as agent. Again, this is a legislative final decision, and that will be heard for final determination October 7th, 5:30 in this room. Mary?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So we have Mr. Gregory Sykes, who has submitted this request for a conditional use to locate a 195-foot tower to be used for communications equipment. Like you said, it is located on Pless Clifton Road. It is in a rural, open space character area. And this is where it is located on the map. It is to the, excuse me, to the west of Statesboro, towards the, sorry, excuse me, east of Statesboro, towards the county line. And then here is a photo of the zoning map, which shows it is zoned Ag 5. And then here's an aerial of the parcel as well. This is the site plan, which shows where the tower will be located. And then here's a photo simulation, and this is the before photo. Or I'm sorry, this is the after photo. You can see it towards the back. And this shows north of the property. Yeah, this is west of the property, east of the property, and then north of the property. And then I'll go back to the site plan. And the staff does recommend approval of the conditional use with conditions.
All right, thank you. Ms. Cadel? I'm Ms. Cadel, I'm Mr. Cadel.
Not the first time or the last time that I have to meet.
They're named like Ivy.
Yes, ma'am. Good afternoon. My name is Ivy Cadel. I'm from the law firm Baker Donaldson. I have office in Macon, and we represent the applicant here. We're looking for a 195-foot monopole tower. It'll have a three-foot lightning rod on top of it. It'll have four positions. For co-location, we provided what we call the heat maps that show how it basically takes an area of poor to low service and establishes services in that area. We provided our co-location study. We're willing to meet the conditions. I think we've already given you the ship over report. We attempted to, I think via FedEx. It may or may not have come in today. So we're, you know, this is a monopole tower. We're going to have four places for, we'll have one place for Verizon and three places for other providers to co-locate. It's kind of way out in the east side of the county, up against the river, the Gichi River. So it's farmland. We've given you the photo simulations, and they recommend approval. So that's... Anybody have any questions?
Just a curiosity question. Only because we have so few in this area. In fact, I think we have one. It may still be in the Bullock County lines. The new, they're not new, they've been there forever, that look like trees that are disguised. Do y'all ever use those? And what is the benefit or pros or cons of those towers?
Some people think they are less intrusive. I happen to think they look really weird. So we prefer this design. This design is a sleek, non-reflective, galvanized structure. It's designed to last. It's not going to corrode. But some jurisdictions think that the big, I call them bottle brushes, look better. And, you know, sometimes we have to follow the zoning like we've done here. And when that's required, then it is warranted in other ways, we'll do it.
I was just curious. There is one in at the Bullock County, right up the line. And people keep asking, what is that?
Yeah. So this one meets the ordinance. If you look on our, if you look, we did the zoning applicant response. We got the standards governing the exercise of zoning power. We went through the eight standards there to show that we do, in fact, you know, comply with what you require for conditional use. So fortunately, that was not required in this instance. And there will just be a small galvanized pole that, like most of these things, kind of fades in the background, and everybody's excited when their phone works again.
Are there any questions for Mr. Cadel?
Can you go back to the simulation? Just wanted to see it. Thanks.
If there are no questions?
I would just point out, that's it way back in the background. Most of what you see there are power poles.
Yeah. Me too, see it. And since there are no questions then, and there's no one signed up to speak in opposition, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
A motion for Mr. Lane to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from?
With the conditions.
With the conditions. Again, final determination, county commissioners.
Yes, ma'am.
October 7th. Thank you, Mr. Cadel. Oh, yeah, well, I guess we had a vote. All those in favor? All right, approval recommendation is given. Agenda item number two. Janet Lanier has submitted an application to rezone approximately 10.5 acres from R-80 to R-2, which means 80,000 square feet, to R-2, which is a 15,000 square foot, for the purpose of creating a two-family duplex housing development. The property is located at 424 Brandon Drive, and Grace Wooton will be acting as agent. We do have three people signed up to speak against this. So I just want to again remind you of the 10-minute rule. All right, Mary?
Thank you. So we have Ms. Janet Lanier, who has submitted this application to rezone 10.55 acres from R-80 to R-2 for the purpose of creating duplex, a duplex housing development. The property is located on 424 Brandon Drive. It is located within a suburban neighborhood character area. And here is where it shows it on the map. It is just west of Statesboro, like right on the city limits. And this was where it shows that it's in a suburban neighborhood character area. Here is the zoning map, which shows that it is currently zoned R-80. And here is an aerial of the parcel. This is the site plan that was submitted. Then we can come back to that. And then this shows south of the, or north of the property. Excuse me, this is south of the property. And then this is west of the property, east of the property, and then north of the property, so right across the street. And we'll go back to the site plan. And there are conditions recommended within the staff report.
All right, with that being said, Ms. Wooton, would you come forward?
Good evening. I'm Grace Wooton with Pape Dawson, and I'm presenting as the agent on this rezoning application. It's good to see y'all again. As always, I want to start by thanking you all, the Planning and Zoning Commission, the county staff, and the community for being here this evening and allowing me the opportunity to speak to this rezone request. As mentioned by Ms. Loach, we are requesting a rezone for the property located at 424 Brandon Drive. This 10-and-a-half-acre site is currently zoned as R-80 and abuts both R-80 and R-2 properties to the north and south, as well as wetlands to the east. We are requesting to rezone this property to R-2, which, according to Bullock County's website, is classified as intended to establish and preserve quiet, relatively low-to-medium-density neighborhoods of single or two-family residences. As you can see from the site plan we've provided and prior two-family developments done by Mr. Lanier, that this is exactly our intention, establishing the gentle density of a two-family neighborhood while preserving more than three acres of natural land, maintaining the existing neighborhood scale and character, and providing an acre of open and recreational space alongside a missing-middle housing option for potentially young professionals, small families, and retirees. This proposed plan complies with Bullock County's comprehensive land plan and complements surrounding varying land uses, while also being contextually sensitive and having very few negative impacts. Staff recommended approval with conditions that we're happy to accept. I want to end with mentioning that this site plan is provided, is proposed by a local developer known for developing, keeping ownership of, and maintaining pristine and quality sites. This one is intended to be no different than that. With that, I'll turn it all over to you and the community, and I'll be happy to try and address any questions or concerns that you all may have. Thank you.
All right. First person signed up to speak is Ms. Shelley Roundtree.
Madam Chair, can I just point a clarification? Staff recommended conditions. We did not recommend approval or denial. I just wanted to make sure.
If approval is granted, conditions are recommended, yes. Ms. Roundtree?
Thank you for letting me speak and share concerns of our community. I might need some help with this. I'm not a techie person. Okay. The zoning, the rezoning request for 424 Brandon Drive would have numerous negative impacts on the surrounding property values, aesthetics of the community, and increased infrastructure requirements on the backs of the taxpayers. The first thing, the current zoning of R-80 has been in place since the original zoning plan of 1994. No multi-unit zoning has been passed in this area by any previous zoning boards or commissioners. The current multi-unit complexes on Brandon Drive have been grandfathered in and were built prior to an established zoning plan, but put in, that was put in place on November 4th, 1994. Westbrook condos were built in '86. Westbrook townhomes, '87, '88. Country Club Court, '91. And Cypress Villas, 1993, according to what I got off of the internet. Also, while single-family homes of R-80 have grown in value and remain well-established with maintained structures and aesthetics, the vast majority of the multi-residential properties are in poor repair with decaying exteriors, damaged structural elements, walkways, balconies, windows, doors, signs of roof damage, leading to interior issues, health conditions, and overgrown grounds and clutter, which negatively affect the character of the neighborhood. Oops. Rezoning would entail ignoring, to this rezoning limit, would entail ignoring four possible higher-density yet still single-family home zoning options, which would be conducive to the Brandon Drive community. The current proposed rezoning would increase by 10 times the residential units compared to R-80. This proposed development would put strain on county infrastructure and service necessities at the expense of taxpayers for the purpose of putting a greater return in the investor's pocket. It's a privately-owned proposed development for individual gain, not a public endeavor for the benefit of citizens. Residents have already pushed back at a previous zoning request less than just a year ago, which was denied, foretold by the zoning commission, also denied by the county commission. A petition against the previous multi-density project was submitted by concerned citizens of Brandon Drive, and citizens have again petitioned against this a second time, seeking the denial of the proposed zoning change. It would, it should not be incumbent on the current long-term property owners to beg for the established single-family zoning to remain. And if you look at, from the Bullock County Department Review, item number two, it seems too low of a threshold when considering zoning changes to answer the question, will the proposed use adversely affect the existing use or usability? Should we be asking, will the proposed use maintain or add to the adjacent nearby property? Current rapid and extensive zoning changes, particularly those with multi-density units, will have very long, will have long-term effects that you really look at it now, what are you going to do about it? No one builds these developments with a plan of decay. They look great at first in unsightliness. But the fact of the matter is that multiple predominantly non-resident owners, along with numerous and highly transient renters, equals joint responsibility and zero accountability. The result is evident when comparing single-family homes of similar age to the multi-density units off Brandon Drive. And I've got some pictures to show you that.
Ms. Roundtree, are these the same pictures that we have?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, yes, they are. Okay, thank you.
Okay, here's a lovely home. We can focus it up a little. Do I do that? Thank you. Here's a lovely home off of Brandon Drive. I don't know whose it is. I'm jealous of their grass, though. And right across the street, this is what we have. I didn't just ride around and find the best and the worst. It took me about five minutes to ride down the street. Here's another one. Great house. These homes are in a, in the duplex, they're all about the same age. They're not new homes that I'm comparing. It's apples-to-apples ages. And here we go. That's what they look out their door. They can see each other's properties. Even low-cost things like signage, doesn't cost much to keep a sign up or cut the grass. That's just what happens when you don't have people living in the area that, you know, people who don't live there, they don't own it. And then the people who own it don't live there. So it's a real problem. Also, the character of these types of developments is incompatible with the existing low-density rural neighborhood of single-family homes. Residents are concerned that new development of most likely rental units will lead to more of the same issues of decline, upkeep, disrepair, litter, and general devaluation. Nearby residents have cited existing traffic congestion on Brandon Drive, which is only 12.1 miles long. There's no shoulder for this narrow two-lane county road. If you go back and look at where the sign, the zoning request sign is, you can see where it just drops off, and there's no shoulder to walk on. It's just gravel and rocks and grass and weeds. That's right to the edge. So that makes for dangerous walking and biking travel, which is very common when you have these higher-density developments. Staff reviews have previously noted that potential negative impacts on emergency and services in schools. And in 2023, a supplement was added to the zoning code requiring a collector road for the new, for new multi-density zoning projects. The proposed layer layout by the developers shows no such road. It's part of the public record that previous multi-density projects also did not address this standard. And I'm just going to ask with the zoning commission, county commissioners' vote, not only to allow a four-zone skip-over and create a go-around of their own recently enacted requirement of a collector road for a private investor. And I also want to share real quickly, one of our neighbors, he actually borders the property, has some concerns, and I said I would share them for him. The southern property line is in the middle of Georgia Power right-of-way, and planting shrubber is restricted there, so he's worried about a buffer. Dense septic drain fields will make the adjacent property at 428 Brandon Drive subject to septic leakage because of the slope of the land. And a deep well at 428 Brandon Drive would be subject to underground drain field seepage and risk damaging the aquifer, which supplies water to the deep well, which is close to the Georgia Power right-of-way. One more thing, talking about the seepage and the wetlands and all. This, when it rains, this is going to be however many more septic tanks.
Can I stop you a minute? Can you give us the name of the gentleman you read, you just read?
Oh, yes, that's Mr. Gibson.
Mr. Gibson.
At 428 Brandon Drive.
Thank you.
This is the wetlands on the end. All that's going to drain into that. And then you go taking out the trees and all that. And then even if you build it up, then you've got the problem of it running down. It goes out on Cypress Lake Road. And I can only imagine it would make it much worse than it's already been already. That stays wet. That didn't used to, but for several years, that just stays that way. Now we've got a pond back there. Just in summary, I just want to say again, there have been no previous rezonings for multi-density, only grandfathered in previously-built units. The current multi-density housing units are in decay and disrepair and are not only out of character with the neighborhood, but negatively impacted. Only single-family homes have been built in keeping with the nature of Brandon Drive neighborhood in accordance with the zoning regulations established in 1994. They couldn't recall, when I was up here, that there had been any other multis built since the zoning came into effect in '94. Rezoning for a multi-density project has only just recently been denied by the zoning and county commissioners at the end of 2024. The proposed layout is already not the standard, to the standard of the 2023 supplement added to the Bullock County Code of Ordinances, which requires a connector road to multi-density projects. And there is overwhelming neighborhood opposition to the zoning request. And just to think ahead a little bit, if this development is passed, it will be part of your legacy as an authority representative of this county. And in 10 or 15 years, you're going to be proud of it.
Thank you, Ms. Roundtree.
Thank you.
There are two people signed up who did not get to speak. I may ask the permission of us forward if we will grant those last two people two minutes to give a presentation? Do I need a motion? Two minutes each.
Motion to approve.
A second, all those in favor? All right, then, Mr. Stacy Webb. You will have two minutes.
I'll try to get it done, Les. My name is Stacy Webb. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. Shelley has broached most of the issues that I had on my agenda. And those issues are traffic safety concerns with over 200 in and outs spilling onto a local road as opposed to a collector road, particularly with the new buildings that are going on above Willapon and behind Pojos. Brandon Road is going to be heavily traveled as people head out to Savannah and Atlanta.
Mr. Webb, can you bring that microphone a little bit closer to you?
Yes.
So that others in the back can hear you.
Okay. Is that better? My concern also is water runoff concerns with the basin at the Veterans Memorial and Cypress Lake Road overflowing. I'm concerned about well drilling. How are we going to continue to deplete the aquifer in our area especially? I'm concerned about a negative physical impact on the Bullock County taxpayers. Why should we, as taxpayers, have to fund something we are against? And for the very nature of our neighborhood, we're not a rental community. I don't know of anybody who buys a starter duplex. Usually, you're going to do it to rent it. And that will change the nature of our residences. We've had people who've lived there for over 40 years and pay taxes there. We take care of our homes and our yards. We reach out to our neighbors and connect with each other. A multifamily unit community will not help increase that value we have. Whoever, and I'd like to say, whoever's against this rezone request, I please ask that you stand. Thank you. And thank you, committee.
All right. And the last person, Ms. Liz Parish.
Hi, sorry if I'm a little awkward. I've never spoken at one of these. My name is Liz Parish, and I live on Honeysuckle Lane in a neighborhood near the proposed development. When my husband and I moved to the area, we did so, like many others, trying to get out of the city. Like other young couples on our street, we want to raise a family in an area that's less dense and closer to nature. For decades, longer than I have been alive, this area has largely maintained that. This rezoning request flies in the face of historical precedent as well as Bullock County's own comprehensive plan. This proposed development would cause demonstrable impact to the historical character and natural setting of the area. The comprehensive plan was developed to prevent this exact sort of disruption to establish communities like the one and the others that you just saw stand are here to defend. This area is also not built with a road or utility infrastructure intended to support such a rapid increase of population to an otherwise rural suburb. The lot in question is well situated to support several single-family homes, keeping in line with already established community, historical zoning, and the comprehensive plan. It could just as well have a few single-family homes carefully and considerably plotted on it in keeping with the standard for the area. I urge you, of course, to also consider the environmental impact. Let's face it. Do we really want another bulldozed dirtfield that has been stripped of all trees, flora, and natural character only for cheap identical structures crammed together to be slapped on it? Townhouses that will bake in the sun without any shade on a graveyard of once-was biodiversity? Approving this zoning request would be a betrayal of your own comprehensive plan. The old growth forest on it, the wetlands, the residents who have established and continue to care for the area. Thank you for your consideration.
All right. Ms. Loach, if you could add four minutes to the agents? Is that for her, she wants a rebuttal? All right, come on back forward. And then we may have some questions at that point.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I will try not to use it all. I don't intend to. I would, I think first it's important for me to speak to the last rezone request that was mentioned for this property. It was in November of last year, less than a year ago. I want to make it clear that Pape Dawson was not the applicant or the agent. I also think it's important to note and assure that those that were in opposition, all of those community concerns were evaluated and considered while we researched and designed this plan that is provided. I think that that consideration is reflected in the differing staff reports as well as the density comparison in this plan versus the plan that was provided in November. The two reports significantly vary in the impacts and summaries and the rezone standard reviews all of the standards which we comply with and having neutral impacts in many more of the categories than negative. Speaking to the impacts that were mentioned in opposition, specifically the aesthetics of the community and the tax dollars, I want to, I want to kind of speak... of the community and the tax dollars, I want to, I want to kind of speak to more density and what that could provide. Different land uses, I think, promote adaptability in this ever-changing market, having varying, but complementing land uses promotes adaptability and reduces the risks of dead zones if, if one of that, if that use declines. Building smaller, infrequent, and compact developments also helps promote open space and rural land while making more efficient use of infrastructure and creating engaging neighborhoods and active districts that increase, ultimately increase property values and add more tax dollars. I also want to speak personally, standing on my own laurels and having gotten to know Mr. Lanier over the past few months, I completely believe in his vision and his intentions and of keeping this property, and I also will plan next month to bring photos of the property that, the properties he's owned on Pulaski Street, another set of duplexes that he's owned for the last 18 years, and he takes pride in them, and they're well-maintained. I asked, all of, all of that being said, with stormwater, we're going to also mitigate that and ensure that no additional stormwater leaves the site than currently already does. We're going to maintain that buffer, we have room on the other side of the Georgia Power easement to account for that. I know personally I do, and also the developer who's local cares about what the community thinks and wants this to be an asset, and something that, in fact, you can leave behind in a legacy that you're proud of. And with all of that being said, I ask you to consider being in line with our request, and thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. If I have any questions for Ms. Luton?
I have a question for somebody.
An opposition?
No, no, for the county.
County, all right, Ms. Loach or Mr. Pope?
I don't really know, I don't know who needs to, the thing that the opposition brought up about the road?
Yeah, in the, the previous case, that was considered a multifamily development. However, this is a two-family development, so there's a difference in the supplemental standards in, in the requirement of multifamily having to go to a collector road. We had a couple of cases that, that kind of got brought out in, and ultimately it gave a variance to, to one applicant at some point, but in, in this application, it's a development for two-family dwellings, which is a different standard altogether, so it can go on a local road.
And our staff report, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, showed that there was not a negative impact on traffic for this, this development.
Yeah, I mean, of course, your, your level of service for a road is going to be, is going to be impacted in addition of one car, but the level of service that, that meets the threshold of having to have any other improvements for the development, the anticipated numbers are not there for this development.
So there are no, there are no plans in the future to improve this road at this point in time?
As far as, you know, resurfacing at whatever schedule that may be, but, you know, no red lights or anything like that are planned, or road widening or anything like that.
All right, Mr. Bath?
Where are the septic tanks going on the side with the Georgia Power right-of-way?
So you can't develop anything vertically in the Georgia Power right-of-way, but we can put septic lines in those.
How about, where's the well, community well going?
It's not, there's, after further research, there is accessible county water, or waterline that will connect to it, will not affect the aquifer, will not do the community well.
What's, what's, excuse me, what's the septic buffer for?
The septic buffer is for the wetlands that are shown there, that we will not be impacting or disturbing at all. When you do septic field, they have to be 25 feet away from the buffer, which is within the, that's the same buffer we have to put ourselves on for any kind of grading or development anyway, so it's just highlighted that we will not disturb that buffer, and we will not come within that required buffer limits of it.
So between buildings and road and sidewalks and septic fields, how much impervious surface are you going to have? And how much runoff are you going to have? And how much does your stormwater pond hold?
That's all stuff that we'll dive into as soon as we do the engineering and further develop this site. That's a lot of money to put into a site upfront, but I can assure that we can't build this without it meeting state and local requirements and providing those numbers.
I know from living in the area that the wetlands there got all it can handle.
Yes, sir, we won't be putting anything into the wetlands, it'll stay.
Got to go into wetlands, the only place it can go is downhill.
We will not be putting any more into the wetlands that currently go into there.
You got to.
Any other questions, Mr. Lane?
On the wetlands, what way do you have to sure that the wetland want to move over the water?
I'm sorry?
Overflow, what's that overflow?
Overflow, we have not designed any overflow yet. This is, that will all be in the design phase of it when we do the engineering, and it'll meet all of the state and local requirements.
Should this commission recommend approval? They do have to come back with us with the site plan, will they not?
If this was approved with the conditions, they would need to come back to this board for a site plan approval, because, again, you'd have to look at what that recreation area was, how it was designed, and, and that sort of thing, so. Yeah, I do, I do believe this would have to come back to you all.
All right. Are there any questions for the opposition side? Any of these?
I've got one more question.
Mr. Bath?
I know we're going to vote on, or we may have voted on it last month, the new cul-de-sac size, is this going to be in that, or is this going to be grandfathered into that?
It would not be grandfathered. I think y'all designed this with the widened pavement.
Okay.
That was required by the ordinance change.
All right, if there are, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
If there's more discussion from this board, we'll entertain a motion of recommendation.
A motion to deny.
I've got a motion to deny from Mr. Lane. Is there a second? A second for Mr. Brandon? All those in favor of denial, show the hands. All those against? I think that's unanimous. We are going to recommend denial to the county commission. Some of the residents can get some issues worked out, but again, we'll see you get on October 7th at 5:30 in this room. Now, any of you who would like to leave now, you're welcome to go, or you're welcome to Shelley Roundtree, do you need these back to present, to give to the county commissioners? Could we give, yeah. I hate for you to make, you got a copies for them. You need to keep your copy. You don't need one?
No.
Okay.
If you don't mind, would you move on out into the hall so we can continue?
Ladies and gentlemen, can y'all move on outside? We have more agenda items. Item number three, KB Rentals has applied for a special tax district. It submitted a streetlight special tax district application for a new development, the Arcadia at Lots Creek subdivision, which is located on Lots Creek Road. Mr. Denver Youngblood will be here to act as agent, Ms. Loach.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So we have, like you stated, KB Rentals, who has submitted a streetlight special tax district application for Arcadia at Lots Creek. It is located on Lots Creek, and, there it is. Here it is on the map, which shows that it is located west of Statesboro, towards the county line, and it shows that, oh, excuse me. And this is the light plan submitted by the applicant.
All right, Mr. Youngblood?
Hello, how are y'all? My name is Denver Youngblood, I work with Pape Dawson. The final plan for Arcadia was approved on July 23rd, 2025, and we're just simply asking for streetlight application approval. We've added the additional light that Mr. Pope asked for at the entrance. I checked with the clients today to make sure that was, had been installed, and it had been installed. So unless y'all have any other questions, you know, and that's about it.
All right, any questions for Mr. Youngblood?
I've got one question.
All right, Mr. Bath?
James, this meets the, the new lighting, text amendment, you manage or not?
I think it's, it's close enough, given the, the timeframe of how it was developed and.
With the addition of the light he requested?
Correct, yeah, I mean, we worked with the developer to, to, to make sure that that intersection, as he said, was, you know, helps away finding into the subdivision, but overall, staff found it to be significantly compliant with the ordinance.
Thank you. Any other questions? If not, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Got a motion to approve from Mr. Bath? Is there a second from Mr. Lane? All those in favor? All right, it is approved. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda. KJR Group LLC has submitted a streetlight special tax district application for a new development, the Flatwoods subdivision, which is located on the Brooklyn-Denmark Road. Mr. Nick McCall will be here acting as agent. Ms. Loach?
Thank you. Like you just stated, KJR Group has submitted a streetlight special tax district application for the Flatwoods subdivision located on Brooklyn-Denmark with 16 lights in request.
All right, is Mr. McCall here?
I think we have a site plan we'll throw up.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm sorry.
Here's the light plan.
Okay.
Good evening, Commissioner, I'm Ryan Poitras, I'll be covering for Nick McCall on this one, he's out of town this week, but.
Ryan Poitras?
Yep, and just as, as stated with Denver Youngblood, I'm the engineer record on this project for Pape Dawson Engineers, very similar Arcadia. We, we feel that we've met the new ordinance for lighting here, we've added the additional light at the front, just as Arcadia was required per comment from Mr. James Pope, and we asked for approval. If you guys have any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Poitras. Are there any questions? All right, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
A motion to approve, Mr. Bath, second, Ms. Riner. All those in favor? Test track is approved. Thank you, sir. All right, last item on the agenda is a text amendment. Bullock County Board of Commissioners has submitted a text amendment application requesting to modify text within the Bullock County Code of Ordinances Appendix C to include modifications to 202 definitions, 802 commercial and industrial principal uses to include microbrewery and brewpub, 1404 accessory dwellings, 1414 church or place of worship, 1426 home occupation residential, 1439 planned residential developments with single-family and for two-family dwellings, including mixed-use residential developments, for 1453 racetrack and ATV trail riding clubs, for 1454 microbrewery and brewpub, and Article 11 conservation subdivisions. Mr. James Pope will be acting as agent. And again, we'll hear this for final determination on October 7th. Mr. Pope?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and planning and zoning commissioners. Since our, I think this is the, this is the third time, I think you all have seen this. I was able to make a few changes that I believe you all have the staff report in front of you, and tried to summarize it so I can go a little quicker, and I'll show this on the board. So part of the text amendment is for the addition or amendment of various definitions. Some go along with what we are proposing for conservation subdivisions later in the text, but spelling out different types of multifamily dwellings, townhomes was not mentioned, but in one section of our ordinance up till, up till now, so just, again, administratively, it would help us do that, or regulate those. The, you know, again, this being a lot of the third time that y'all have seen this, I don't, if you have questions, just stop me, but, a microbrewery, brewpub, large brewery, spelling those out, considering those for uses. I didn't realize that Statesboro was going to have a similar, somewhat similar text amendment, but I think there's a slightly different in the fact of they would add distillery to it, but ours does not contemplate the distillery part, but. And again, I think Statesboro has someone interested in maybe doing that from what I read, but this is just something that microbreweries across, across the nation is, we're probably about 10 years after the, the wave of microbreweries, there's, you know, local, communities have found it to be an economic benefit for downtowns, as attractions to downtowns, things like that, so I could see where eventually we might have some type of commercial development where we would want to consider that, but, again, that's where those definitions come The first section, significant section that we would be adding, is further defining and considering for conditional use the go-kart, ATV, and motorbike track and trails along with supplemental standards. So what I have on the screen is the supplemental standards that, that we've talked about. Last time, we had input that on number 10, no trail should be located within 50 feet of the property boundaries, originally we had it 20. On 4B, I think that, we didn't catch that on the, on this, but I know we intended to change it to 10:00 PM, so I think, Mary, we just need to make sure that, again, on a 4B Friday and Saturday, operations Friday and Saturday would be no earlier than 7:00 AM and no later than 10:00 PM, is what I know this board recommended last month, so we would make that change ahead of the, ahead of the commission meeting. And then, I believe, on number 11 of ATV trails, supplemental standards, kind of went into more detail where it says, where trails are proposed to disturb wetlands, Chapter 4, Section 4-50.1 of the Bullock County Code of Ordinances, and requirements of the Federal Clean Water Act as amended are required, which generally, a wetland determination by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers must be provided prior to the site plan or other permit approval. So if this board were to, if you get a conditional use approval, then you have a site plan, come back to this board, and we really would not anticipate bringing a site plan for an ATV park or racetrack, bringing that back until we know we have a determination by the U.S. Army Corps, then, you know, if you don't have that, you're just kind of assuming, so that's, we want to.
Can I interrupt you?
Sure.
Why would we vote on conditional use without knowing if it can even be conditionally used? So.
Without the Corps?
Yeah, it doesn't make sense to me to get this far to vote on it without knowing if it can even be used for that, I mean, I know I'm saying a lot of the same words here, but for it to be used for that use, it doesn't make sense to me, anyway.
Could you add the word contingent?
Yeah, I mean, I'd be happy with saying that's contingent, conditional use, you know.
At least on number 11.
If the Army Corps approves it, but, you know, if we vote on a conditional use. But, you know, if we vote on a conditional use without the Army Corps, then, I mean, what happens then?
Well, it's not...
If the Army Corps says no, you can't use it.
Then the only place you can ride would be in the uplands. Army Corps wouldn't have any...
So the conditional use would still apply. So the property, just not the whole property.
Oh, but 11.
But let's say you had 1,000 acres and you wanted to develop trails. You're going to have to have engineered drawings for showing the trails, where it's going to impact, GPS location, things like that. That's going to show that you're not encroaching on the wetlands or the wetland buffer that's required by the state EPD.
That makes sense.
So that was the intent there. And, you know, I think the intent is that you want to disturb as little or no wetlands as possible. And that's where the, going back up to number three, all stream crossings shall be by way of a drainage structure. It's not just riding through the bottom of a creek and stirring up all the sediment. It's, you're going to have an impact on a wetland or a stream, but you're going to have to engineer that to where it's going to be significant to the point of, it's not going to cause erosion and other things, so...
There is no number three, just for record.
Well, it's on the, it's our package. That's just a change. Yeah, it's omitted from our...
Okay. Thank you for...
But is it...
Before you move on, somewhere in the, when we originally discussed it about fencing.
Fence. So I think that the ordinance would allow for, there is some fencing language in the ordinance already that if, I don't have the entire ordinance sitting in front of me, but...
Can you go back to, I saw it earlier?
But it basically gives a discretion to the zoning administrator for an acceptable fence.
What, you talking about what kind of fence?
I know we talked about a barbed wire fence or welded, or, you know, fence wire or whatever. And, you know, I think...
Does a string run around the property, fencing, or what's that?
No, I mean, again, I think that would be something, when they come in to you all, they're going to have a fence and a buffer proposed, and that would be some, that would be the place that this board and the zoning administrator would iron out those details.
I would think a barbed wire fence could be dangerous to any accidents, so I...
Yeah, I wouldn't, I mean, we get calls, somebody wanted to put a razor wire fence up, but the ordinance allows for the zoning administrator to make a case-by-case basis. And so we do not approve razor wire. But just saying that there is language in the ordinance that would allow us to make an interpretation. And two, I think it would come to you all ultimately to kind of iron that out.
I think it would be appropriate, in this case, too, to not require, if somebody wanted to build like a 500-acre, one of these things, and it was on like, two sides of it was paper company land or something like that, for example, you just run like, you know, field fence around that. And then on the sides where you have people, maybe, we would require them to put up a privacy fence. But if you put it in here where there's a certain kind of fence, you've got to put all the way up, all the way around it, it reaches off so much. Well, it might be too strict, or it might not be strict enough where it needed to be more so.
But I guess that's more reason to let the zoning administrator make the determination.
And, well, and I think Mr. Akins pointed out to me since last meeting is, with the conditional use, you're always going to get that chance to put additional conditions on there according to the site. So I feel comfortable enough with it, and the point is taken. And I do know that we talked about the fence, and so I didn't forget about it, but I'm glad you brought it up, and that, so, yeah, that's, all right. Let's see. The next item just really pertains to churches and kind of mixing up some of the supplemental standards for churches and allowing for parsonages. So I think something that's fairly, fairly common, but it never really spells it out in the ordinance. So I've had to rely on some, you know, just as a zoning administrator interpretation before. So that adds to that, some clarity. Back to the section 1404, accessory dwellings, allowing those in areas, freestanding dwellings, Ag 5, R80, R40, and R25. That's the big change there. And then, let's see. The next item under home occupation residential, I still have not arrived at a good, you know, I tried to put some thought into it on the vehicle part. And I know we talked about it, but under letter O, which says these vehicles should be limited to types of vehicles associated with delivery of domestic mail and packages. You know, I don't, I think I, as far as administering the ordinance, can we talk about something like an Amazon package or some, but not something with a freight bill?
I think your biggest issue is going to come in with like food services. Most of those trucks are going to be refrigerated trucks. They're going to be either straight rig trucks or small truck trucks that are going to deliver to a food service person that has it at their home.
Right.
General, other type businesses, you're probably going to be all right with that definition of vehicles. I know we had the one with the Big Dog.
Yeah.
Ivy Miller.
Their food service trucks coming in are bigger than UPS fed egg trucks.
Yeah, and I don't...
And I'm not the answer.
I mean, I don't think that would meet the definition. I can share on that case that two weeks after we accepted the road, the same food truck vendor went through and broke two of the drainage grates in the roadway. So, I mean, they're, and then on the counties repaired it at that point. But, so, yeah, I mean, I don't think that the county really, well, I don't know that matters necessarily, what I think. I think whatever the board gives me direction to go in. So if y'all think that this is spelled out in a way that is reasonable, then we'll do our best, and I guess we can always come back and modify it more if we had to.
Yeah, I think the vehicle thing is pretty, I mean, basically, you couldn't have a semi truck or something like that. You know, the whole concept of home occupation, I think, James, correct me if you think I'm wrong, but it's really designed for occupations that you don't even know they're there, basically. You know, it's somebody working out of their home that doesn't...
Trucks are becoming a very popular thing, and they've got to have supplies. So it may be something we see more of.
Well, I think if the county's having to foot the bill to fix roads, then we don't need to put it in. Because I don't want my taxes to go up because somebody's business is constantly breaking the road. You know, that's unfair to all of us in this room.
And I'm not sure, were they a home occupation or a cottage industry?
Well, a home occupation conducted in an accessory building has to have a conditional use. They were granted a conditional use.
I mean, I guess the concept of a home occupation, in my mind, is something, like I say, that is virtually, you don't even really know it's there, or you shouldn't.
And they're stationary. They don't move to other locations.
Right, right.
I think the real issue with, I mean, this may be the only way to deal with it. I felt a little bit conflicted about the Big Dog thing myself. I think that type of thing is inappropriate in a subdivision. I don't know how to address it, but if you can't make the turn around the sign to get into the subdivision, then you don't need to be going in there, basically. And that's just my...
But I'm just afraid we will see more and more of those cases come, because that is the thing right now, food trucks.
Well, if we keep seeing those cases, they'll have to abide by these rules if they want to operate a business in their house.
Yeah.
Because like...
Because subdivision is no place for...
Yeah, like James said, if we're footing the bill to fix grates, you know, then they don't need to be in there. So...
And it's unreasonable for the other, ever how many people live in there to have to, you know, to expect to have to deal with that, you know. I don't like it, but I don't know what to do about it.
Yeah, and it's supposed to be for businesses with, I think, no more than two employees. So, you know, it's not a lot of traffic generated by the business, but it's, but, yeah, if you get a large truck, like a food truck with a trailer, then a comparison's always, well, it's no bigger than the RV down the road, kind of thing. But it's a business. So I guess we just kind of handle it the best we can when it comes in. But those are conditional uses that...
Don't we, isn't there a restriction on subdivisions for people who live in them that drive a semi truck for a living, that they can't park in there? Maybe that's where it comes from. I just know it don't happen, so I don't...
Yeah, again, our code enforcement is majority complaint-driven. So if somebody doesn't complain, then...
Well, no, I mean, I just know, I mean, I, there's subdivisions all around my house. And there's a guy that used to live in one of them that drove a semi truck and parked it up the road at a peanut place because he didn't have, like, you can't.
Well, it's...
They're just, they're not in there.
Or was he doing that with consideration?
Maybe people are just, 99% of people are just generally that considered. Maybe they really are.
The way some of the old roads were built, though, it wouldn't take long to tear them up. So, yeah, I think, without kind of pulling out the ordinance book, we have some parking standards in some areas of the county for that, but I can't cite it specifically.
In relation to this, like, is there some kind of way that we can... If you live in there and your job is to drive a semi truck, and you can't even drive it through your house and park it there, how can your neighbor be able to take deliveries from a, since it's a semi truck, basically? They can't wait, it's a rhythm, so leave it like it is.
Yeah.
Yep. I know what it does to park a lot of Dairy Queen in a big food truck, so I can imagine.
The next section deals with facades of single-family, or, well, single-family and two-family dwellings. As you see here, again, not to go through this again with the board, but on the front facade, took note that the copper accent roofs and something of that type of design should be considered. So I added that on letter S, or decorative accent roofs using a secondary material, which, for example, a copper accent roof. And I think that was a very helpful suggestion by the board. With that, I also, on the next, under wall finishes and materials, I know PVC siding was mentioned, and I did a little bit of research. If it was me looking at a plan, the way I interpreted and read about the PVC siding is you could really consider it in the vinyl. Not, I understand it's not the traditional vinyl siding, but... But there's, I mean PVC is in the vinyl makeup of the vinyl siding. So I would consider that as being possible as it's written.
We had them at one of the conferences three, four years ago, and they had some real neat materials.
They've had some more strengthening materials that really were upgraded.
When you're talking vinyl siding that's very flimsy, this stuff was, you know, it was...
It was rigid. It was...
...cordy and stuff. If I've learned anything from having done, I renovated a house, and both the brothers had just built one. And I lived in a spec house in a subdivision three years before that. It was vinyl. If you want to solve the problem of vinyl siding, it's just mandate how thick it is. Because the little thin flimsy junk and the good thick stuff that you might put on a house that you build are two totally different things. Because the good stuff don't sag and fall off, but the thin stuff is what you ride by how, what you look at and you're like, vinyl siding is junk, well, that vinyl siding is junk, you know.
Yeah. And we could get into that in the future. I know there's other places that have regulations on requiring certain warranties and things for materials that would get into, I think, kind of what you're talking about.
Well, I was just thinking, if you're concerned about how, if you're trying to, if you're trying to kind of keep people from building something that's really sorry, you can, you don't have to ban vinyl siding. I think you could just deal with the...
Yeah. And I think the look of subdivisions in the community have already been improved by requiring the brick skirting around the bottom of the house on all four sides. Whereas I think some in the past, it was vinyl siding all the way down to the dirt. You know, you get yard care guy that, not out of the screw, but you get somebody in there that, with a weed eater, and you end up tearing some up. So, you know, I do think we've already seen some improvement, but...
Those lawn siding guys wouldn't dream of doing that, would they?
No, it's been thousands of years, you're fixing it.
Other information, we didn't change anything in the foundation walls or the window requirements or the fake window requirement. If there's the need for just showing some change of just a blank wall, we have that option for the window or some design feature that looks like a window. Garage doors, there's no change there from what we've already proposed. And let's see. I think the rest of the information is the same from the last time. Brew pubs, microbreweries, which, where those go. Brew pubs be highway commercial district and light industrial by conditional permitted. And the microbrewery as well. And then conservation subdivisions, we didn't change anything from that. I don't think, I think everybody was pretty good on that, which I know, Mr. Brandon, you had a suggestion or just for consideration about some of the soils with that. I didn't come up with a good way to fit it in at this point, but I think, I think we have a little bit of time, we can kind of add to it if we need to. But the conservation subdivisions, again, could be a tool used by developers that where there's public sewer available in the county, you wouldn't have to go through a rezoning, you would just be able to develop a subdivision based on the amount of houses you could do in an Ag 5. You can come up with a plan and have a theoretical plan number, and then reduce the lot size so that you're clustering those developments, and then the remaining portion of the property go into a conservation easement. And, you know, you could have passive recreation in those, you could do some trails. But, again, it's a way, I think, that has been used all over the United States as a way to help save some of the farmland that, I mean, by a right, if they can develop it today with 50 houses, you can, again, cluster that... you can, again, cluster that, and there's priority in some of the, what are the primary and secondary types of concerns as far as was conservation. And if you don't count the wetlands, that's already on the property because you can't develop those anyways. So, you know, you're getting a perpetual conservation of land area and clustering the homes that would otherwise, you know, be under the control of individual property owners that, you know, they may not want to, they may not want to buy the five acres or, you know, they, you may, they may have a stream or something like that, that they don't necessarily know. That there, there's just a lot of, I think, a lot of benefit in having some of these types of environmentally sensitive areas conserve perpetually. And this is a way to do that as well. Aside from the farmland that's already, you know, you could use it, but... And with that, I think I'm done. Y'all have any questions for me?
I think pretty well we've questioned you all along. Are there any more questions? Do we have a motion of recommendation?
Motion to approve.
Motion from Mr. Bath, second. Second from Mr. Lane. All those in favor of recommending approval? That would be unanimous, so...
Just for the record, nobody signed up to speak.
And no one signed up to speak. So we'll, some of us will speak again on October the 7th. If there's no other business, is there a motion to adjourn? All right, Mr. Brandon, second from Mr. Lane. All those in favor? This meeting is adjourned.